Good evening, members. Good evening, members of the public. First, the housekeeping rules. Under fire regulations, there are no plans at all to have an emergency alarm test. So if there is an alarm bell, then we have to judge that it's a real fire. And there are three exits. The way that you came in, immediately behind the back of the council chamber and to my right. And if we do leave, then we assemble under the Waitrose canopy to be counted out. Can I please remind everybody to turn off their mobile phones? And could you please make sure that your card is fully in, because we are, as always, webcast, and it's extremely valuable for people who are not attending, including quite often the press, I believe, who take opportunity of watching us online rather than coming in. So, without further ado, the minutes of the previous meeting have been approved, and on the table from the 17th of June is your agreement that I should sign them as a true record.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillors Peter Isherwood, David Els, Pat Frost, Michael Goodridge, and Liz Wheatley.
Thank you very much. Any disclosures of interest?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. And any questions from members of the public?
None, Chairman.
One of these days, you're going to say yes and surprise us all. So, item 1A, which is, let me read it from the sheet in full. WA 2014, Ablicoe 0125, outline application for residential development of up to thirty dwellings, all matters reserved, at land at the east of Low Lane, Badshot Lee, as amended and amplified by flood risk assessment dated September 2014, flood risk addendum dated January 2015, second flood risk addendum dated May 2015, and the SUDS strategy information dated May 2015, and ecology letter dated 29th of the 4th, 2015. Officers, would you like to give your presentation?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. As a brief introduction, I should stress that this is an outline application with all matters reserved for future consideration. Outline applications are used to establish whether, in principle, the development would be acceptable. You'll be aware that this is one of a number of greenfield sites that have come forward to the council, and some of which have been considered by the JPC committee. First of all, site location. The site measures 0.9 hectares and is located to the north of St George's Road, which is here, and to the east of Low Lane, on the eastern outskirts of the settlement of Badshot Lee. The main centre of the settlement is about this location here. The site itself is an area of grassland with significant hedging and trees along its boundaries, particularly to the north, west, south, and partly to the east. It is more open in this location here. There is existing field gate access, as members saw on the site visit, at this location here. The immediate area is largely residential, and there is a pumping station in this location to the north with open fields, which have been subject to restoration over a period of time. Just policy context, really. This shows the position of the site in relation to Badshot Lee, and also the main policy constraints, which is the light green, which is the countryside beyond the Green Belt, and also the hatching, which is the Farnham-Oldershott strategic gap. Perhaps there's an indication of the size of the site in relation to the larger area of the strategic gap around Farnham and Oldershott. The main policies to the site also include, it's within flood zone two, it's also within Thames Basin Heath SPA buffer zone, and it's worth noting that although it's subject to the strategic gap, there's no actual landscape designation applicable to the site. Landscape is normally related to its quality and appearance. And worth noting that in relation to countryside policy C2 and strategic gap policy C4, as referred to on pages 35 and 38 of the agenda, these are out of date for the purposes of being land supply policies following the MPPF in 2012. The proposal itself is an outline for the direction of up to thirty dwellings with a single point of access from St George's Road here. And the application submission does indicate the provision of visibility lines on the northern side of the site. So the layout is indicative only at this stage, and it's thirty units, indicates about thirty-two, I think seventy-two parking spaces to serve the development, which is about two and a half per dwelling. But I should stress that it is indicative only at this stage.
Is it possible to move the microphone across so it's more horizontal to you? I don't know how we can move it so that we can hear you a little better. Your voice is rather quiet, I'm sure. I see people in the public gallery are struggling a little bit. Thank you.
And this plan shows a clearer indication of the access with the proposed part of a number of highway measures, W lines along this section of St George's Road here. You're also noticing in the report that there's also a proposal to make contribution towards an improvement to the main junction in the centre of the village. These are some photographs of the site and surroundings. This is a view looking north-east. This is the site here, and this is the, just about see, the eastern boundary of the site here, with tree cover and hedging down here. This is a view with Low Lane on the western side here. This is looking east along St George's Road from the junction of Low Lane. And that's another view of the Low Lane-St George's Road junction. And this is the, just a extract from part of the western boundary of the site. And this is looking back south with the site on your left and the existing housing on If I just go to the main determining issues, you'll see that some matters are matters of principle and technical judgment, and some are matters of judgment for councillors this evening. In terms of the various headings, the main issues would relate to the impact upon the countryside beyond the Green Belt and the strategic gap, particularly its intrinsic character and appearance. That is a matter of judgment. The allocation of development, we acknowledge the site is outside of the defined developed area, but well related to the settlement visually and would not result in isolated dwellings in the countryside. In terms of housing land supply on the left-hand side, there is a significant shortfall in housing, in both market and affordable housing. It's worth noting that, following a number of planning commissions granted, the updated land supply has changed from 3.7 to 3.96 years. In our view, the proposal would make a significant contribution to meeting these requirements. In terms of housing mix and density, broadly complies with the smart and density considered acceptable for the location. In terms of highways, again, another key issue for residents, you'll see that it's indicative access shown off St George's Road. An application is submitted with a transport assessment, and the proposal is considered acceptable to the County Highway Authority. It's worth noting that, given the local concerns over the proposal, the applicant has indicated, perhaps at the reserve matter stage, that a willingness to look at an alternative access possibly from Low Lane. But I should stress that it is a reserve matter for the purpose of this application. Another issue would be clearly the impact on the SPA in terms of mitigation. In terms of neighbouring amenity, as explained in the report, we propose light of a satisfactory relationship with surrounding dwellings. We do note the comments of Thames Water on page 19 of the report in respect of odour-sensitive developments. The site is close to a pumping station to the north of the site. And in our view, if members were minded to support the recommendation, we would recommend a condition be imposed that the applicant submits an appropriate odour assessment as part of the detailed stage. I think one of the final main, another key issue, is relation to flooding and drainage. And the relevant tests are set out on pages 42 to 49 of the agenda. The main aim is to steer new development to areas with the lowest probability of flooding, but where development is necessary, making it safe without increasing flood risk elsewhere. Officers' conclusions on these issues are set out in the agenda. I'm not going to, sure, we'll talk briefly shortly about the sequential test, and we just have to have some extra information on that. But first of all, my colleague Elizabeth Sims will give a few words on the background to the sequential test.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to add to the presentation at this stage. Members, we're aware that there have been some strong concerns expressed in respect of flooding on the site, and I just wanted to add a few words, as Paula said, about our approach particularly to the sequential test. The site is in flood zone two, so it's of medium flood risk, and the MPPF at paragraph 101 does require development to be steered to areas of the lowest probability of flooding, i.e. zone one, if possible. So the sequential test must be applied to help inform this, and members will see that in the report, page 45, officers have, informed by the applicant's submission, evaluated other sites in the Farnham area for the sequential test. Now, there have been some concerns raised with officers about our conclusions, and, as Paula said, he will expand on this in a moment in relation to particular sites and to address these queries. But I think the important point is that our conclusion is the current application is considered to have passed the sequential test, and we do stand by that, following a re-evaluation of these concerns. That conclusion is that we feel that there are no other reasonably available alternative sites of lower flood risk suitable for this particular development. Now, importantly, we have sought legal advice on flooding matters in relation to the sequential test, and our approach is supported by that legal advice in two particular ways. Firstly, it seems reasonable to adopt the area of search to the relevant area of housing growth. So this is a housing application seeking to meet housing need for a particular part of the borough. So we've restricted the search for sites to Farnham based on that conclusion, and that approach has been supported by a council. The second point, that in relation to sites as alternatives, they must be suitable and available. They're the key tests. And available includes an analysis of the capability of the alternative site to provide a similar level of housing and also be available now. So it'd be unreasonable to say this development could be accommodated by other sites if for all intents and purposes it's not actually available now for them to proceed with an application on it and assume that it could be delivered. Suitable also includes an analysis of sustainability credentials. So you may find a zone at one site is obviously preferable for flood risk terms, but it may be in a much less sustainable location. And this site, we believe, to be sustainably located adjacent to the developed area boundary, Badshot Lee, and close to the amenities, and also relatively close to the amenities of Farnham itself. So this has been the basis of analysis, and I'm going to pass back to Paul to expand a little further on the particular sites that have been raised with us about why we have taken the approach that they should be excluded, not to be preferred over the site in question. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Yes, thank you. So what we've done, we have reviewed the list of sites on page 45, and have also looked at other possible constraints and limitations on those sites for development. And what we've done, really, we have clearly tried to focus on sites that are within flood zone one. Sites within flood zones two and three have been discounted, as these do not have a lower probability of flooding. We have found on the list that some sites that are indicated as flood zone one have also been found to be also partly within flood zone two. Officers also discounted sites that are smaller or larger than that proposed in this application. So we believe that the proposal should, alternatives should be of a similar size to that subject to this application. So we've also considered other constraints in regard to the following table, therefore we've narrowed down the number of sites from that assessment, and we've gone down to sites 136, two sites that are close, within or close to the Farnham Depot and Lower Webbin Lane. And also, site 333 is more or less a correction to the report, where it says site 330, but it should be site 333. So also worth noting that some sites have been discounted, of course, they've been subject to planning applications and have either been given permission or they've been refused over the last few months. So you'll see here that the sites that are within flood zone one and their site capacity, which are the top three, are similar to that currently proposed in this application. And so even here, there are constraints to the likely development of those sites. For example, E Street is an employment site that have to overcome policies for the retention of employment land. And the depot site, again, that's really constrained by the operator of the site and also potential contamination. And the SLAR indicates that that clearly could affect viability and the future development of that site. And again, the associated site, which is in countryside, again, is also dependent upon the rationalisation of the site above, and that information comes from the SLAR. So our conclusion is that we maintain our view that, having regarded that further review, that there are no other sequentially preferable sites for this particular development. So the officer's conclusion is that clearly the MPPF requires the benefits of a scheme must be balanced against the negative aspects of the scheme. A number of issues are matters of planning judgment. Officer's conclusions are set out on pages 60 to 61. And officers consider that the benefits of the scheme, primarily the significant delivery of housing, will significantly and demonstrably outweigh any adverse impacts of the proposal. Very briefly, to the update sheet, you'll see that we've now received confirmation from the County Highways in terms of contributions, and the final comments of the lead local flood authority. Again, there, having reviewed the SUDS strategy, they feel that their main concern is covered by condition 22. And their office's revised recommendation is really to take into account the, to secure the SPA contributions, which was missing from the original recommendation. So that's set out to clarify the position. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Paul. So we now come to the public hearing. We have three groups of public speakers. You have five minutes for each group, and there's a traffic light system to warn you that you have thirty seconds to go towards the end. So first, Mr Cliff Watson, Julie Fluder, sharing their five minutes to object to this scheme. When you're comfortable and you wish to start, please do.
I represent Low Lane and Badshot Lee residents, and live in the...
You've got a dear microphone.
Pardon? Okay. Badshot Lee is the only village around North Farnham that suffers heavily from surface water flooding. It's a very low-lying village, surrounded by fields which are in part of the Farnham water meadows and act as a natural soakaway to Badshot Lee. It also features predominantly on the WBC flood maps. I've witnessed flooding in the winter and in the summer, particularly the summer of 2014, when the whole of Badshot Lee was flooded, including St George's Close, St George's Road, Low Lane. Photos appeared in the local press. Many local residents who are spoken to, who own properties directly affected by flooding in their gardens, front and back, are too frightened to come forward with their names and addresses for fear it would affect the insurance and the selling of their homes. All Low Lane suffers as it lies between flood zone two and three. The nature reserve this winter flooded considerably, and the perimeter reached the perimeter of the proposed site. Local residents have asked many years for help from WBC regarding this, but received little or no response. Margaret Knight from Surrey County Highways has recently listed no fewer than eight discrepancies with the developer, all regarding flooding and issues of run-offs, maintenance, lack of SUDS details, and guarantee of no future flooding. John Fleming from Environmental states that the proposed development does not meet the requirements. FRSA, a WBC should refuse planning permission, and the agency will support WBC at any subsequent A site-specific flood risk assessment must demonstrate the development will be safe for its lifetime. If the developer has not provided any of this, there are plenty of other sites available, and NPPF does not state that the alternative must be in the exact size of the proposed development.
Hello, I'm Cliff Watson from Badshot Lee Community Association. This is the first of four applications to come before the committee over the coming months, proposing in total 370 homes in a village of 650. So Waverley have an opportunity to apply the guidelines and principles contained in the MPPF and localism to ensure that the community of Badshot Lee, both present and future residents, get the best and most sustainable development. Each plan must be judged on merit. This plan has none. Our community should not be destroyed simply to allow Waverley to meet its housing number. We have worked with the town council and the neighbourhood plan and indicated where greenfield development should go if it is absolutely necessary. We are not nimby, we accept some growth is required. The MPPF states that development should not be allowed where lower flood risk exists. Development is not necessary here. There are better local alternatives among the other three sites. This is the only one entirely in flood zone two. It is not called Low Lane for nothing. It was deliberately left out of our village survey because of the groundwater flooding issue. MPPF and the localism might call for local consultation. None occurred here. The applicant has little or no local knowledge and cannot possibly know or understand how genuine local concerns. They admit that the extra vehicles will add to the local traffic levels marginally. They also require the removal of some on-street parking. Badshot Lee has narrow roads, a major lack of parking, and a rat-run problem through Low Lane. It is also very dangerous for cyclists. Sadly, a cyclist was injured and taken to hospital and ambulance earlier this month, just yards from the proposed entrance to this site. Highways have looked at various schemes to alleviate the rat-run problem but cannot come up with a solution. Some highways, in response to one of the other applications, state that the Badshot Lee signalised crossroads junctions experienced delay during peak times and are already approaching practical capacity. The suggested upgrading to the MOVA will not solve this problem and could make things far more worse for pedestrians, as highways have previously stated. As the traffic delays build, the rat-run problem will grow and become even more dangerous. The four-and-a-half-thousand dwellings, plus the increased employment growth just two to three miles away in Rushmore, will add traffic to local roads, including Badshot Lee. Paragraph 64 of the MPPF states, 'Permission should be refused for development of poor design that fails to take the opportunities available to improve the character of an area or the way it functions.' This development fails this test, it adds to our traffic problems, adds to the rat-run problem, and reduces the much-needed street parking. In our position, it is also gambling with the unnecessary flood risk.
Thank you very much. Now, could you pass the microphone to councillor John Fraser, speaking on behalf of the town council?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councilors, Farnham Town Council objects to this application on several grounds. It is completely at odds with the aims of the Farnham Design Statement, and it is not a site considered to be suitable for development in the town's emerging... It is not, and it's not a site considered to be suitable for development in the town's emerging neighbourhood plan. This site forms part of the strategic gap between Farnham and Oldershott, a gap both Rushmore and Waverley are keen to protect. Any development within that gap would lead towards a coalescence of the two sacraments and destroy vitally important green space between them. This site is also adjacent to an important nature reserve, forming part of a corridor for wildlife between Ro Hill and the now flourishing Badshot Lee Lakeside. Much of the good work which has been led to the success of the adjacent reserve will be put in jeopardy by development in this area. The site sits within flood zone two, surrounding ditches are full for much of the year. Badshot Lee is well known for flooding, as it is entirely within the flood plain between the Way and the Blackwater River, with hill slopes rising to north, west, and south. The fields around Badshot Lee form an important part of a natural soakaway, indeed a sponge that helps protect the village. Any development on this site will exacerbate flooding in the immediate vicinity. Traffic in Badshot Lee is a problem, and the junction of St George's Road and Low Lane is always busy. Low Lane forms part of a north-south link route and is narrow throughout, in part exceptionally so. Site egress onto Low Lane for pedestrians or traffic would be highly dangerous, and an exit onto St George's Road also presents grave problems. Residents in houses opposite the site, lacking off-road space, park vehicles along the narrow lane and close to a sharp bend in it. The developers have underestimated extra traffic movements generated by their proposals. But even their modest figure would have a detrimental impact and increased danger for all users of these key roads. This outline application is typical of the applications flooding into Waverley Borough Council as a result of the lack of an identified five-year Council as a result of the lack of an identified five-year housing land supply. The design bears no relation to the local density or pattern of development in Badshot Lee, it takes little account of local needs, it is a result of a developer's opportunistic desire to exploit a perceived weakness of the borough's position. Farnham Town Council urges Waverley Borough Council to protect its settlements by publishing a five-year housing land supply list at the very earliest possible opportunity. There are several sites within the borough identified in the recent SHLA which fit the criteria for inclusion upon such a list. The application for development on this site should be refused on several grounds. In short, it is unsuitable. Please do not allow this sensitive edge of Badshot Lee to be developed in such a manner. And you have one minute to spare, Mr Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And finally, can we call on the agent, Mr Stephen Kosky, to give his point of view?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, my name is Stephen Kosky, I'm a director of Barton-Wilmore, we are the planning agents. The application site adjoins the residential area of Badshot Lee at its southern and western boundaries. The field is low-quality pasture land and, as confirmed by the council's agricultural consultants, is not of future value for agricultural purposes. The site is in a sustainable location with good access to local public transport for retail, education and employment facilities in Badshot Lee, Farnham and Aldershot. Barton-Wilmore has been active in promoting the site for the last ten years through the local plan process. We submitted an outline planning application for thirty dwellings with all matters reserved in October two thousand and fourteen. Whilst the application only seeks permission for the principal of the development, we have provided an illustrative master plan to demonstrate how the site could be laid out. The scheme will include a local area of play and eleven affordable dwellings, which equates to thirty-seven per cent of total provision. We have worked very closely with council officers for nearly two years to refine the scheme and address all technical considerations, such that we are able to come here tonight with a recommendation of approval by your officers. The primary benefit of the scheme, as acknowledged by officers, is the provision of deliverable, new market and affordable housing in a sustainable location. This is an important material benefit that weighs heavily in favour of the scheme. The local area of play will also be a benefit, as will the payment of new homes bonus to the council. With regard to the lack of a five-year housing land supply, you've heard tonight that the council's published position is that it does not have a five-year housing land supply, just under four years. Under these circumstances, the National Planning Policy Framework is clear that relevant housing policies will be out of date and that permission should be granted for sustainable development unless the adverse impacts of doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh any benefits. Looking at the technical considerations, the officer's report is very thorough and discusses the relevant technical matters in some detail and weighs the impacts against the benefits. So I'll quickly touch on the more noteworthy considerations. With highways, a transport statement was submitted with the application and includes traffic survey data. The traffic statement demonstrates that over the course of a typical weekday, the scheme is likely to generate about a hundred and twenty-five total vehicle movements. The county council, as highway authority, are satisfied the scheme could be accommodated in a safe manner with suitable access for pedestrians and vehicles. The case officer agrees and the proposal is acceptable on highway grounds, subject to the recommended conditions and the completion of the legal agreement. With regard to landscape and visual, the site is located immediately adjacent to an existing residential area. The scheme would not result in any coalescence between Farnham and Aldershot, but rather it provides a natural eastern extension to Badshot Lee, as acknowledged by officers. Whilst the final layout, including the height, scale and mass of the built form, will be dealt with under Reserve Matters, the illustrative layout provided by the applicant does demonstrate that thirty dwellings could be comfortably positioned on the site in a manner providing a good standard of amenity for future occupiers and existing neighbouring residents. I won't labour flood risk and drainage, but as you've heard, the flood risk assessment identifies the site as being within Flood Zone Two, and so the applicant undertook a sequential test, which was passed. The sequential test evaluated sites identified in the Strategic Housing Land Availability Assessment in Farnham and the surrounding area and concluded there are no other reasonably available alternative sites at a lower risk of flooding, which is corroborated by officers. The mitigation measures proposed, however, are a minimum height for finished floor levels, onsite storage pond and earth buns along the northern and eastern site boundaries. SUDs are also proposed, and having regard to all the flood compensation and mitigation measures, the council's drainage consultant, RPS, considered the flood risk from all sources has been satisfactorily addressed and appropriately mitigated. Officers conclude the development would therefore not increase flood risk. With regard to the effect on Thames space and Heath SPA, the council seeks development within this area, provides suitable alternative natural green space, SANGs, to mitigate any effects. Accordingly, an agreed financial contribution will be made. An ecology survey was submitted with the application and it found no evidence of protected species but did identify some natural habitats. A condition again is proposed requiring a method statement for working with reptiles should any be found. The legal agreement is in the process of being finalised and the applicant has agreed to the request to pay a total SIL charge of a hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds and nine hundred and... sorry, a hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and sixteen pounds and a total SANG charge of ninety-two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight pounds. In summary, the council acknowledges it cannot demonstrate a five-year housing land supply and therefore this outline application for thirty dwellings should be approved if it is judged to be sustainable development unless the adverse effects of doing so significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. Thank you.
Perfect timing, thank you very much indeed. And finally, we have councillor Nazir who's a ward member and wishes to speak, not a member of the committee but wishes to speak.
Mr Chairman, do I have to stand or I could just sit down and speak? I would rather stand and speak about it. Thank you, Mr Chairman. The first point regarding this is, I'm not going to speak as a councillor for the area, but I'm going to speak as a citizen and living in that area, and what my fellow councillor and the people living over there have said is truly correct. First thing is, the traffic, I use that road every morning, and I'm standing over there for twenty to thirty minutes with the traffic which is right now over there. And plus, you have the ducks crossing sometimes and the natural animals over there. And I've seen a duckling, little duckling, being gone under the car and was killed. And I had to stop the traffic myself and move those ducklings and things. The other thing my fellow councillor said about the sponge, it is a sponge, I've lived over there for eight years, the flood is accumulated over there and it is taken over by those grounds which are empty. The traffic-wise, if you have more houses over there, the, not only the traffic, the pollution level is going to go such high, which is already disturbing in that area. The Lower Lane is always used for the people coming from Aldershot going towards Runfall and that area, which is going to be totally stopped. We have, with local people, we have also cleaned the roads, traffic is horrendous. Wherever the builders have got their details, I do not agree with it. I do not agree with that the schooling is provided for that. I have struggled for my daughter just to get into junior school for more than six months just to get her space which I was getting in Hale. And that is the situation of the schools over there, they are already overflowing, plus the GPs as well, because I've lived over there for eight years, plus there are no families who have to take their kids all the way from Badshot Lee to Hale School, which is on the other side of Farnham. And if you're going to put three more housings, dwellings over there, it's not going to justify any of those answers, yet alone pollution, yet alone the overflow. Are we going to make those houses and get these people who are already living over there flood? Do we want to make sure that the flood is in that area? That all I need to say, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Storey.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As the other councillor for Webber and Badshot Lee, I looked at this application and I had so many issues with it that I thought I was in danger of breaking councillor Forageewski's record, but I'll try not to do that this evening. As Mr Watts said, the residents of Badshot Lee are not NIMBYs, they have worked very carefully and closely with the designers of the neighbourhood plan to try and decide where are the best places in Badshot Lee for sustainable development. And they issued a questionnaire to all the people of Badshot Lee with a map showing alternative places. And you'll be surprised to know that Low Lane was not number one, or number two, or number three, or number four, or number five in the response to that questionnaire. It didn't come anywhere in the response because it was regarded as such an awful site that it wasn't even included. So, flooding. I accept fully that we have proper drainage engineers who have considered this issue. Zone Two, of course, only relates to tidal and fluvial flooding, not to flooding caused by runoff, but I'm sure the drainage engineers have included that in their considerations, although of course we've had no comment from Surrey County Council on that part of the flooding risk. As you, those people who went on the site visit on Monday would have noticed, despite all the dry weather that we had had prior to that morning, the ditches surrounding the site were full to capacity. As regard to the sequential test, I'm not convinced that site number four seventy-eight isn't acceptable because the potential contaminated land is just that, it's potential. Where is the test that has gone on to identify whether there is actually contamination or not? Moving on to the traffic matters, again, I accept that this is a technical issue that Surrey Highways have considered, but it only works by depriving the local residents of parking space on road. And if you know Badshot Lee, you'll know that there is no parking spaces, there's no car park, the only, well, the only public car park is at the church, which is not really public but is sometimes used. People have to park along the side of the road and there are a few garages in fact just opposite Low Lane, and that is already subject to the owner of one of the neighbourhood properties, neighbouring properties wanting to build houses in place of those, so that will even exacerbate that situation further. If you look at the, in fact, the screen that you have currently, you will see that the proposed access is very close to the blind bend on St George's Road and despite it being a thirty mile an hour limit, I can assure you that vehicles do not travel at that speed along that piece of road. Moving on to the location of the development, we talked about or heard about the fact that it's close to the facilities of the village centre. Yes, it's such a big metropolis, Badshot Lee, that it doesn't have a doctor, it doesn't even have a corner shop. If you want to go and buy some milk or whatever, then you've got to get to Sainsbury's. And, you know, I'm reasonably fit, but it's quite a long walk to Sainsbury's, so I'd probably have to try and get the bus if I wasn't going to go in the car. And there's one an hour, so long as it's not Sunday, of course. So I suspect that there's going to be plenty of vehicle movements for that reason. And then we've come to, well, you, Mr Hardwick mentioned the ODA. I suspect that a detailed report on the ODA from the Thames Water Facility at the Reserve Matters stage is too late. I think it should be here now, it should be part of the assessment of whether this site is viable at all. And then we have, at the back of the report on page sixty, we have the question of cumulative effects and the statement that there are no schemes of significant scale in the local area, which is contradicted by page forty-six which points out two major schemes which are within the Badshot Lee area. So, Mr Chairman, I have to tell you that for all of those reasons and for various things in the indicative plan, which I won't go into, I will not be voting in favour of this application.
I thought you were very restrained there in your end of your speech. Councillor Mallon.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Can I begin with some questions? The first topic is the Flood Zone Sequential Test. Could officers explain why they thought it right to eliminate sites which were larger or smaller than the site in question?
Would you like to respond?
Chairman, since that has derived largely from the legal advice, we've taken Eric, our lawyer, is going to answer that question.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just go through the advice that we had from council on the sequential test. Basically, he said that when you apply the sequential test, you need to look at the proposal itself and look at the alternative site in that context. So it's, in basic terms, could you take that proposal and fit it on an alternative site, the same size, scale of dwelling? So that's the approach that the officers took when they look at alternative sites to see whether this particular proposal would suit a particular site which is within a locality, basically, of this proposal.
Thank you. I must admit, I am a little surprised. I can show you authority which shows that a group of two or three smaller sites can be used to replace one larger site, if they're in Flood Zone One, the other ones in Flood Zone Two. And by simple mathematics, if you can accommodate thirty homes on part of a larger site, you are clearly not only putting homes in a better flood risk area, but you're also, of course, making an even bigger contribution to the, to the housing shortfall, which we'll come to in a moment. I'm afraid I disagree wholeheartedly with what's been said. If you look at the table on page forty-five, you will see, taken straight from our schlar and the green sites, which our planning policy officers have put at the most likely to be developed. You have number twenty-five, land west of Badshot Lee, a hundred and forty homes, and then you've got twenty-nine, Cockbridge Farm, three hundred and fifty homes. So I'm sorry to say that I am completely unconvinced and this site fails the sequential test in spades. Mr Hardwick paused very briefly over the housing shortfall, and I had actually suggested to Mr Evans we might want to discuss briefly the fact we've just published our detailed five-year housing supply document. And this contains not only an assessment of our requirement, which is put at two-two, two-eight-eight-oh, two thousand eight hundred and eighty homes over the next five, five years, number which I entirely support, but it also goes into what our supply position is, and over eighteen hundred, or sixty-five per cent, are homes on sites which already have full outline planning permission. A further three hundred and forty are on brownfield sites which do not have permission, but nonetheless we expect them to come forward in the five, in the five years and be developed in that time, and then there's sixty-five which are windfall sites. And the question I have for officers is, how can it be right? How can it be right to include homes on expected brownfield sites and not have a single dwelling from expected greenfield sites? The concern that the government has if a planning authority cannot point to sites which will provide its five-year supply, we have an embarrassment of riches. We have over a hundred sites and officers have already graded those into green, amber and red, and one can accept the red ones are unlikely to be easy to justify. But if one remembers that this is an amber site itself, which officers are recommending approval for, it seems strange that when we have over nine hundred new homes available on the ten green, green sites and over two thousand five hundred on the amber sites, accepting that some will not perhaps be immediately available, it seems very hard to me to see how we cannot, by a simple decision if we choose to take it, eliminate our so-called shortfall at a, at a stroke. I look forward very much to that happening in the not-too-distant future. Unfortunately, with that in mind, we have the support of a judge, Mr Justice Lindblom, who was quoted with approval in the Wenman case, which we were a party, by Mrs Justice Lang, who went through the authorities with her customary detail and referred to the first of Lindblom's cases, Crane against the Secretary of State, where he, as she says, importantly, he rejected a submission... importantly, he rejected a submission that when conducting the assessment under paragraph 14 NPPF, the out-of-date policy should simply be disregarded in its entirety. I suppose my question to Mr Hardwick, as he simply more or less said it's out of date, what do officers take from that? Do they think we can apply any weight at all to policies C2 and C4?
Chairman, if I could pick that up, I think the simple answer to that is, I think you can still apply some weight to it, to C4 and indeed C2, but not so far as they are housing supply policies. So I read that as you can, cannot any longer say that development in the countryside is unacceptable in principle, because that is assuming an absolute restraint on housing in principle. But so far as countryside beyond the green belt and strategic gap policies are countryside policies, the other arm of countryside protection is relation to paragraph 17 of the NPPF, which talks about the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. And for purposes of that arm, I think you can still apply weight to it. And C4 is linked to C2 in that it isn't a landscape designation, as Paul has explained, it is part of C2, it's part of the countryside protection, but in, in applying it, you should be applying it in such a way as to evaluate whether the site will result in coalescence of Aldershot and Farnham, rather than saying we are using it to prevent development in the gap or the countryside per se. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for that. Mr Justice Lindblom has been busy, and in the Crane case, he not only went into that, but he also explained that, in that some weight could be given to it. He said, however, the weight to be given to such policies is not dictated by government policy in the NPPF, nor is it or could it be fixed in the case law by the Planning Court. It will vary according to the circumstances, including, for example, the extent to which the policies actually fall short providing the required five-year supply, and the prospect of development soon coming forward to make up the shortfall. In a later case, which is Fidesha Estates Overseas Limited against the Secretary of State, he addressed the same issue, and what he said is quite interesting. Paragraph 14 of the NPPF prescribes an approach to decision-making when relevant policies, including relevant policies for the supply of housing, are in quotes, 'out of date'. It does not, however, prescribe the weight to be given to the ability of a particular proposal to reduce a shortfall in housing land supply as a benefit to put in the balance against any adverse effects. This is a matter for the decision-maker to judge, and the court will not interfere with that judgment except on Wednesbury grounds, which really means that unless you make a really appalling decision, the court will leave you to make your planning judgment. Naturally, the weight given to proposals' benefit in increasing the supply of housing will vary from case to case. It will depend, for example, on the extent of the shortfall, how long the deficit is likely to persist, what steps the authority could readily take to reduce it, and how much of it the development would meet. So the decision-maker must establish not only whether there is a shortfall, but also how big it is and how significant. This will not be possible unless the relevant policies are correctly understood. Certainly, from having looked at this quite, quite carefully over the past few, few days, I think the deficit need only persist for a matter of days if we decide to look at our enormous site supply, and the steps we can take directly, we don't rely on anyone coming forward to offer to build for us, we have over 100 people wishing to build, and we should be in a position to pick and choose. So I take from, from this that actually we can apply a fair amount of weight to C2 in both its arms, and I'd be quite happy to apply C2 in its normal form. However, I'm equally happy to go with the countryside protection form as well. If we move, move on from, from that, we have heard about the highway and traffic position, and certainly it was interesting on the site visit to see that two cars, ordinary family cars, had to negotiate quite delicately to get past each, each other, and that is simply on not even the widest part of Low Lane, the narrowest part, rather. The odour has been touched, touched on, I won't add, add to it. But I think the issue of the strategic gap is very important. If you look at the large, larger map, you see this would be a push towards Aldershot, whereas the other sites which are in the, in the schlar list are actually further, further south and don't go as close to the Aldershot edge. So I find that an impressive argument for not giving this, this proposal support. But I think the other point I should go back to briefly is that Mrs Sims made the comment that sites had to be available now, and I fear that there's a piece of misdirection going, going on. Could I refer her and anyone who's got it to page 12 of the NPPF and the important footnotes, 11 and 12, which define deliverable sites and developable sites? And the guidance I have found is that the phrase reasonably available comes straight from the wording of 12, which is the six to 15-year sites, not the nought to five-year sites. And to quote the footnote in full, 'to be considered developable, sites should be in a suitable location for housing development, and there should be a reasonable prospect that the site is available and could be viably developed at the point envisaged.' And I think the point to make is that we now take flood risk much more seriously than we did. The devastation caused people's homes and lives by the events of 18 months ago, I think, are fresh in anyone's memories who watch the television at all. And that is why the NPPF takes us seriously. We do not want to take flood-sensitive decisions in any sort of hurry. And so the idea that even if, even if it was right to ignore some flood zone one, one sites, because they were too big or too small, even if that were right, the idea they have to be available today has to be wrong, seriously wrong. They have to be reasonably available, and I think it is clear from the relevant wording that these means they have to be available inside the plan period. If you make a mistake about developing on any form of flood, flood-able land, that mistake will be there for decades. Our plan period lasts about 15 years. I think it is entirely consistent with the whole approach of the NPPF to use that period, and therefore I would not accept that we should eliminate any site from the comparison merely because it might not be available tomorrow. So I say my main reasons are that I completely disagree sadly with the officers on their application of the sequential test, and I hope we can get this right in future because we are going to have a lot of these sites which will have a flood zone element. I think the housing supply figure is far less significant for us, because we can take a decision to get rid of it tomorrow if we want to. We have the sites. And therefore I will use that, both C2 in its countryside form and the strategic gap, as further reasons for being unable to support this recommendation unless my colleagues come up with something startling and persuasive. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. councillor Forowiski, excuse me, just before that, Matthew, you wish to come forward?
Chairman, if I may, can I just make a couple of comments on the issue of five-year supply? Councillor Mulliner and I have exchanged a number of emails and had a number of discussions on, on this. Perhaps I can explain our thinking on, on where we are with five-year supply of housing and the reason, reason behind it. Just to recap, yes, we include brownfield sites in the schlar, and that's because they're, they're policy compliant. When it comes to greenfield sites in the schlar, councillor Mulliner is right, there are an awful lot more there than we actually need to meet, meet our five-year supply, and perhaps even to, to, to deliver the local plan in total. I think the difficulty I have, and if councillor Mulliner doesn't mind, I will do my own quotes from, from selective documents, and my quote is from the, the guidance produced by the Planning Advisory Service about five-year housing supply and how you calculate it and how you interpret it. Couple of things, things to highlight, they're very clear, as is the NPPF, that deliverability is key. When you are identifying whether the housing sites are going to be delivered in that five year, you have, you have to look at deliverability. And can I also quote directly from this guidance in relation to the status of schlar sites? And councillor Mulliner is correct, we've done an awful lot of work and we've got a lot of sites in, in there, but I think we need to be clear what the status of those schlar sites are. They are not allocations in, in the local plan. What they are, and I'll read directly, and, excuse me, members, the schlar is a technical assessment which will tell you what land is available, suitable, and likely to be economically viable in your local authority area, and which has the potential to be developed. It is just technical evidence which will tell you about supply. It does not give the go-ahead for development on sites identified, will not guarantee planning permission if an application comes forward and feeds into, rather than replaces, decision-making processes such as the development of, of, of your local plan. So I think the key point I'm, I'm making, and I have to say, personally, I'm very attracted to councillor Mulliner's thoughts, but I don't think the guidance gives us the, the confidence and the ability to include schlar sites in our five-year calculation supply at the moment. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Mulliner, you wish to come back, please? I'm delighted that you're quoting directly, it's very important. If I can quote back from our own document, paragraph 3, 3.6, the NPPG says that planning permission or an allocation in development plan is not a prerequisite for a site being deliverable in terms of the five-year supply. Local planning authorities will need to provide robust, up-to-date evidence to support the deliverability of sites, ensuring their judgements on deliverability are clearly and transparently set out. If there are no significant constraints, e.g. infrastructure, to overcome, sites not allocated in a development plan or without planning permission can be considered capable of being delivered within a five-year timeframe. That's the state, that's straight from the NPPG, paragraph 31. What I'd like to know, if you can tell me, is what is the, the robust evidence we have to support the inclusion of the brownfield sites, the 340, the, the 340 dwellings? And why does the same argument and approach not apply to any, not one, of the greenfield sites? So what I'm really confused by is if we can include any brownfield sites, we must have done some sort of assessment of their deliverability, and are you really telling us that none of the greenfield sites would pass the same test? I find that very hard to believe, because after all, the planning policy officers, when they went through the appendix seven, it is, and went through all the hundred-and-odd sites, they put a minority into the green sites, green category, which they regard as being almost, shall I, to use a, a phrase that we often use in this council, shovel-ready. It's just that if they were brought, brought forward... So I'd be grateful, how do we justify putting brownfield sites in but not greenfield? I'm amazed.
Can we now move on, please, and councillor Forowiski?
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to say, I, I can't possibly follow that, even if I have the record for being the longest speaker, but you have to say that the chairman did beat me on his closing remarks, I don't quite hold the record. I, I make no apology for, you know, really sort of wanting to scream and shout about these things, because I get, once again, I'm having this déjà vu moment where I feel I've been here, I'm on the merry-go-round, I want to get off, I'm hearing the same old argument, the same old reasoning for trying to fulfil and get forward, get put forward a successful application. So much of what's in this report worries me, and I have to say, I am very worried by some of what I've heard here this evening, I do find it of great concern. One of the issues that I would like to take up is because whilst I don't claim to fully understand the technicality of what councillor Mulliner has just said, but if we go to page 44, and there's, and the third paragraph down, it talks about an application where the sequential, sequential test was applied to in Cranley, and actually, one of the comments that I wrote on my form here, that councillor Mulliner with great understanding at that time, really understood what sequential meant and what the sequential test was all about. Now, in that, it quotes that Stephen Wales QC, he, he gave this council information with regards to the Barclays, the Barclays application in Cranley. My concern here is that as a Cranley Borough councillor, that quote from Stephen Wales, from Landmark Chambers, was commissioned by a resident of Cranley, it wasn't commissioned by this council, it was totally separate, so it came from a resident. Now, just going on from that, in his legal opinion, which referred to there, in the officer's report, Stephen Wales answered two questions, the first on whether the catchment area to which to apply the sequential test could legitimately be applied to an area that was not borough-wide, and he concluded that it could. But in the bulk of his opinion, Mr Wells did conclude that the flood risk sequential test considered elements in flood risk only and not other criteria, not proximity to amenities or public transport, for example. What I would like to know is that we can't possibly say, we can't possibly say that we don't have other areas that we could be looking that is not, that are reasonable. There has to be, you know, you talk about 30 dwellings available in flood zone one, we, we really have to look at this in much more detail. What worries me are, have we taken information from Stephen Wales through the Barclay application and applied it to this without getting independent council to look at the sequential test separately in this case? Because I find we can't cherry pick. And even if we did, did that information come from Stephen Wales or somebody else? So I'd be grateful for comments on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Erica, would you like to come up?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we subsequently gained advice or obtained advice from councillors of different chambers, Corniston Barristers, that we selected the second time round, and the advice was general for Waverley as a local authority as opposed to just one development.
Thank you, you wish to come back?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Chairman. It gets even more confusing, it's one, one application we can accept one sort of legal opinion and another we can accept another. Is there no tying up of this? Is there no, or is it so confusing?
I'm sorry, both, both councils agreed with each other, the, the advice is actually the same. Sorry? Well, the first advice by Stephen Wales, that was with regards to that, that development in Cranley, but then the council then went and sought advice separately from a separate chambers, and they gave us advice that was similar to what Stephen Wales had produced before.
Thank you very much. councillor Coburn, did you, I think you signaled to speak?
Well, up to a point, I think, is the answer to that, yes. I, I don't really know where to start. I mean, I couldn't agree with councillor Mulliner more, as Mr Evans and various other people in this chamber know, I've been going on about five-year housing land supply for about five years. I feel so strongly that we're letting our residents down, and I've said it in this chamber, and I will continue saying it until we do something about it. I'm not going to carry on with, with flooding, I just know what I see. I'm, I'm a very simple being, I've said that before in this council chamber, I know when I walk through water. You know, I don't need an expert to tell me, I know. And this is an unacceptable site because it floods, and it's as simple as that, and we have better sites now. You know, you, you can send in all the experts you like, but nothing will convince me that my feet are, are wet, that I'm not in a flood. I'm pleased you got that site up, because I think that's a better picture. When you just had the smaller site, when you just had the smaller site, it, it rather gave the impression that this was a suitable site. When you see what it is, little bunyan on the sort of edge of Badshot Lee, filling up part of this strategic gap, which Rushmore is very, very keen to work with Waverley on preserving and enhancing, you know, you are encroaching up, that is Aldershot up there. Some of what we've heard tonight about the facilities nearby, it, it's just absolute nonsense. This is right in the countryside, right in the strategic gap, and the strategic gap should be maintained. If you carry on further east, you come to the nature reserve, I mean, this is the whole point. This is a green space, a natural green space, a valuable natural green space for both human beings and, and for wildlife. So I would defend this, this area on, on countryside policies, whatever you describe them as, I, I would have no hesitation. The talk of facilities, I, I can understand the frustration of, well, I don't know whether they're looking frustrated, of the, the Badshot Lee residents, they have put so much work into the neighbourhood planning process, they have been so active. If you know Badshot Lee, you know where the recreation ground is, you know where the kiln is, they want to join up the village, make this a really sustainable development, anything that goes on in Badshot Lee, not stick little bits on like this which relate to nothing. Where are the facilities? Aldershot's your closest, Sainsbury's, as councillor Storey says, there's no facilities in Badshot Lee, this is one of the, the sadnesses, the, the centre of the village has no shops, it has a church and it has a superb school, there's no parking, the roads are narrow, as councillor Storey says, put your yellow lines down there, where are the residents going to park? We're supposed to be giving permission for development that enhances the environment. This does nothing to do that, I'm sorry, it just destroys the environment, so many aspects of the environment, and I just found, I found it very hard on the site visit. Usually I go along, I look at my report and I go along and I think, well, let's ask the questions. I found it very hard to understand any reason for putting development on this particular site, I really did. I, I just think the whole thing is, it's a means to an end, it's a way to get a permission in this sort of vulnerable time without actually thinking about what the village wants. The village has worked hard to come up with solutions, the village will talk to any developers, talk to the town council, talk to Waverley. We are not dealing here with people who say absolute no development in Badshot Lee, they couldn't be more helpful. But this, it does nothing to the village, certainly doesn't relate to any, the idea that it's close to the centre of Farnham, do you know how Farnham works? I mean, it's nowhere near the centre of Farnham, and trying to get to these places on, on the roads... the roads we have, you know, you're talking, you know, out, I won't say hours, but you know, a long journey. Councillor Storey has already said, I wouldn't like to walk from Sainsbury's from here. Doctor's surgeries, I think the nearest one is Aldershot as well. So, you know, we're looking here at a, a development on a field that floods, part of the strategic gap, in the countryside, adjacent to a nature reserve, miles away from amenities and facilities. Why are we even considering it? I just find this particular application so hard to find anything good to say about it. So I apologise, chairman, if I haven't found anything.
Very much. councillor Stane.
Thank you, chairman. I'll come in with my common sense hat on here, can't keep up with these people that have been speaking so far, but it gives me horrors that we're even considering building near a pumping station, it's a main sewer, the main sewer runs through there, in a flood zone, and I've said so many times in this chamber, there is no, there's disregard, I think, for infrastructure. Yellow lines don't improve the roads, and the local people have lived there for many years, and I just find it unbelievable. One of our regular routes is from, we go up to the Birdworld and back to Cranley, and it's, it's gone from doing it in three quarters an hour each way now, to, to three hours to go and collect what we want. And it's just absolute madness that we are even considering this site, let alone when there's other good sites available, I just don't understand where we're going. It's awful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor James.
Thank you, chairman. Not knowing the area, but having been on the site visit and then I drove around, I have two things, I call it leapfrogging. It's open countryside, the other side of a road, be it Low Lane or St George's Hill. If there was a road running around to the right hand side of that and it was backfilling, then you're looking slightly differently, but this is leapfrogging into open country, unknown, where does it ever end? That's my first thing, I think things should be contained sustainably and then moved on. And it's obvious on that map, you can see where you would fill up the, finish the square practically, and it probably would be better. But the, the other problem was that the, if the opening speaker said that the site had to be equivalent of a 30, development of 30 houses in, in another application site, so if one of the ones, that number 25 or 26, one of them is 140, so if that applicant came in with a division in his site, one for 100 and one for 40, would we then be able to look at the 40 to replace this 30? I mean, to me, you know, you just do that on a blackboard, I, I cannot see that one site that's 30 has to have an equal site of 30 elsewhere, because in my past district counselling, lots of sites came in, divided up over the years, sometimes it was 50, then 100, and then ended up with 350, but that was over the space of several years. So can you tell me that one site that is 140 could not be divided up to 100 and four, and then a 40?
Would you like to respond to that?
Yes, thank you, chairman. That's very helpful interjection in relation to how other authorities may have dealt with this principle. We particularly asked council for advice on that point, and the advice that we've given you reflects that, that generally speaking, to be reasonable in this approach, you should be challenging the development to be able to be built in a site which is commensurate in size and scale and available now. So I, I do appreciate the comments that have been coming back about the disagreement with that, but, but I'd just like to reassure you, we have thought very carefully about this, but we have to be reasonable to the applicant who has a right to make a planning application and to present the evidence to us in respect of the sequential test. And I hope that the further information that we provided you would reassure you that we have looked at these sites very carefully, and we did come to the conclusion that for this particular development of this scale, there isn't an alternative available at this time. Thank you, chairman.
councillor Forowiski, have you got something more, it's very interesting to bring back?
I will be very brief, chairman, I'm known for it. It's, I'm getting even more confused by, by the second, but I said it before and I'm going to say it again, because I think we need to be very, very clear on this, as a councillor, we shouldn't be building homes in flood zones, there is no need for it, it's dangerous, we're saying that, and if, if you're going to decide that that's a policy that you should have, then maybe you should have a policy on transport that includes armbands for children and little dinghies so you can get around these flood zones when it actually happens. We're not doing ourselves any favours here this evening, I have to say, because when we talk with, I'm sorry to go on about this sequential test, but I think it's really, really important. I've been told this evening that we've had independent advice from council on this particular subject, but yet in the report, you're quoting information from council that was supplied by a resident of Cranley and not a member of this council. So I just want to make it clear on that, the information that was quoted on page 44 came from a resident, not this council. So if the information's the same, then we should be, that's what it should say, you shouldn't be quoting from the resident. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Well, the very, very end of Elizabeth's point, you made the point that the applicants have the right to bring their case forward, the officers have written reports, it's up to us to make a judgment as to whether we think it's reasonable or not regarding all of the various things that are going on. So it's now time, I think, because there's no other speakers holding their hand up, to go to the recommendation and see what, what we, we think of it. There is a revised recommendation on the update sheet that's subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement to secure the provision of 30% affordable housing, highways and transport improvements, infrastructure including education, environmental improvements and recycling, the setting up of a management company to manage open space and the SUD scheme, and to secure SPA contributions, and subject conditions, subject to conditions, permission be granted, and the conditions are following on from the main document. Can I please have a show of hands for those people who wish to support the officer's recommendation? I, I started going bad, I'm afraid, but can I please have a, a show of hands for those who wish to refuse the application? I'll abstain.
That was none in favour of the recommendation, and councillor Adams, are you of the same view?
I am.
You are? Oh, sorry. So that's 16 against the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Now can I have an alternate proposal, please? councillor Mullin, you wish to come forward?
My best. The, the, the application fails for the reasons that we've already listed, which is failure to satisfy the sequential test, site 478, which was actually on the officer's report is good enough reason, the reference to potential contamination is not an adequate reason to say it isn't a suitable comparator, breach of both policies C2 and C4, the importance of protecting the strategic gap and protecting the countryside for its own sake, the loss of residential amenity owing to the traffic difficulties and the odour. I think that's, I think that's it. Is there anything else you?
Not favoured in the neighbourhood plan?
I have a feeling it's not sufficiently advanced, I'm not sure.
I think it's been out of consideration.
Officers, would you recommend any extra conditions or?
Could we check what the status of the neighbourhood plan is? Is it sufficiently advanced to be material consideration?
Chairman, I draw members' attention to the paragraph on prematurity in the report, which does advise that at this stage you couldn't give any weight to the neighbourhood plan.
Is there any other comments that officers wish to make before we go to the vote for refusal?
Chairman, yes, we would also advise that members include technical holding reasons for refusal as well in the event of a failure to actually sign a legal agreement, so to protect those issues of infrastructure, affordable housing and effect on the SPA, we would recommend three further reasons for refusal, which would say the applicant's failed to enter into an appropriate legal agreement to secure contributions towards secondary education, highway improvements, environmental improvements and recycling, stroke refuse, and therefore the proposal conflicts with policies D13 and D14 of the Waverley Borough local plan. Second one, which would be the standard wording in relation to Thames Basin Heath's SPA, which with members' indulgence, I won't read out, you are very familiar with that wording. And a third one, which would be in respect of, again, a holding reason, that notwithstanding the objection in principle to the proposal under reason one, which will be the countryside reason, and taking into account the absence of a signed legal agreement, the proposal will fail to provide affordable housing within the meaning of the NPPF appropriate to meet Waverley Borough council's housing need, and the proposal is therefore contrary to paragraph 50 of the NPPF as the development not, does not provide a mix of housing in relation to current and future democratic, demographic trends, market trends and the needs of groups in the community. So that is three legal agreement reasons. We note the sequential test reason, which perhaps I could put some word, words around. The application site lies within flood zone two, and as the proposal seeks new residential development, the flood risk sequential test is applied. The aim of the sequential test is to steer new developmental areas with the least probability of flooding. The council considers that, based on an assessment of other sites in the Farnham area, it is not satisfied that there are no other reasonably available alternative sites at a lower risk of flooding for this development. The proposal would therefore fail to comply with paragraph 17 and 101 of the National Planning Policy Framework 2012, and would not constitute a sustainable form of development as required by the framework. And then in relation to the countryside, if you would like me to put some words around that, the proposal by virtue of the number of dwellings, scale, urbanising impact and harm to the landscape character would cause material and detrimental harm to the character and setting of the existing settlement and the intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside, contrary to policies C2, D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough local plan 2002, and paragraph 17 of the National Planning Policy Framework 2012. The adverse impact would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the proposal when assessed against the policies of the National Planning Policy Framework 2002, sorry, 2012, taken as a whole. Then in relation to the strategic gap, the application site lies within the Farnham stroke Aldershot strategic gap, where policy C4 of the Waverley Borough local plan 2002 seeks its protection from inappropriate development. The proposal by reason of its position, scale and encroachment into open countryside would result in a significant coalescence of Farnham and Aldershot and would fail to promote the enhancement of the landscape. The proposal would be contrary to policy C4 of the Waverley Borough local plan 2002 and paragraph 17 of the National Planning Policy Framework 2012. The adverse impact would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the proposal when assessed against the policies of the National Planning Policy Framework as a whole. And then finally, in relation to councillor Mullin's suggestion in relation to an impact on amenity, I would suggest wording around the proposal would cause adverse impact on residential amenity by the likely generation of odour in respect of the neighbouring use, contrary to the relevant paragraph in the NPPF and policy D1 of the Waverley Borough local plan 2002. Thank you, chairman.
Very much. We've got a substantial list of reasons for refusal, can I have a show of hands, please, for those who support that reason?
18 in favour of the.
Are there any exemptions? Or, or against? Nothing? So that, that is unanimous. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our, our meeting. We look forward to meeting again in the near future.